Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. We’ll call this meeting to order and start with a roll call. Commissioner Woodier.
Present.
Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
Present.
Commissioner Scheffrin.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
And I am Chair Sherri Nichols. I also want to acknowledge that we have extending their workday in supporting us tonight, staff members Carol Helen, Chip Cornell, Jeff Churchill, Glenn Coyle, Josh Moiler, and Ian Lefkort. We appreciate their hard work. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion, the agenda is approved. We also have a meeting summary from December 20th, 2023. I look for a motion to approve that meeting summary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that meeting summary is approved. This is the point in the meeting which we take, provide opportunity for public comment on any item that is not subject of a public hearing. And it’s, we have two people signed up for items from the audience.
And first up is David Morton.
You know the drill, David.
Good evening, Commissioners. I’m David Morton, 19934 Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond, 98053. The draft two revisions of the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Element policies look great. Redmond may have an opportunity to apply for funding through EPA’s Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Program. By prioritizing and listing several of Redmond’s climate resilience policies, a priority climate action plan could be submitted to the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, for implementation funding. I ask that staff please consider prioritizing CR-23 to transition the city’s fleet away from fossil fuels to clean alternatives such as electric vehicles, or EVs, and please consider prioritizing CR-24, which is to work with utility providers and other partners to expand EV charging infrastructure across the city, ensure that people have access to EV charging where they need it, and expand EV charging readiness for buildings. And please consider creating a new policy to provide programs or initiatives that assist small businesses in replacing gas and diesel vehicles with electric vehicles. These three policies, along with 17 others, were included by the Department of Commerce in its draft list of priority measures for the state’s Priority Climate Action Plan. These 20 measures have been collected from existing state plans and programs and identified as priority measures for the purposes of pursuing funding through Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, or CPRG, implementation grants. Commerce’s priority measures are implementation-ready, meaning that the state’s design work for the policy is complete enough that a full scope of work and budget can be included in a CPRG implementation grant application. They can be completed in the near term, within five years, and they advance the state greenhouse gas reduction mandates in the RCW. The EPA anticipates awarding approximately 30 to 115 grants ranging between $2 million and $500 million under the general competition. Eligible applicants must compose a list of priority measures identified in a priority climate action plan developed under a Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, or CPRG, planning grant. If Washington’s Department of Commerce is awarded an implementation grant, then the State Department of Ecology will be tasked with scrapping and replacing fossil-fuel-powered commercial vehicles. Prioritizing the transition of the city’s fleet to clean alternatives such as EVs and expanding EV charging infrastructure are crucial steps towards reducing reliance on fossil fuels and promoting sustainable transportation. Additionally, the inclusion of a new policy to assist small businesses in replacing gas and diesel vehicles with EVs reflects an understanding of the importance of engaging various stakeholders in the transition to cleaner technologies. Because the Department of Ecology of Commerce has identified these policies as priority measures, and they meet the criteria of being implementation-ready, short-term achievable, and aligned with state greenhouse gas reduction mandates, Redmond might also secure funding from EPA’s Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Program. Furthermore, the collaboration between the Department of Commerce and the Department of Ecology suggests a coordinated effort at the state level to address climate issues comprehensively. If successfully completed, Redmond’s Priority Climate Action Plan could contribute significantly to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and promoting environmental sustainability in the region within the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Eric B.
That’s a really hard act to follow. I’m Eric Blakemore. I own Frederick’s Appliance Center in Redmond, Washington. This is my real estate agent.
Damiano Boscolo with KWB Commercial.
Damiano and I have been working together for about seven years trying to find a location for our store. We want to stay in Redmond, but our problem is everything that we find either is not big enough, it’s not zoned correctly, it...
It’s not outright permitted in most of the zoning. It’s either a limited use or a conditional use in most of the zoning codes within Redmond under the durable retail sales, durable consumer goods, excuse me. Oh, durable consumer goods. Is, in most of the city codes, it’s not outright permitted, but limited use. Eric’s issue is that he has both a need for both retail, about 8,000 square feet, and a need for warehouse space. And the logical space for that is the MP zone for that type of building structure to have both of those functions. And there are certain businesses, big national corporate chains, that appears the code is written for, but it doesn’t allow for smaller, family-run businesses in this, in Redmond. So we’d just like the Planning Commission to consider what options are available for small business owners.
Because I’ve been here 31 years, and Frederick’s has been in here 50-plus years, and my family’s in the business, so help us find a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we will move on to Redmond 2050 Housing Element Regulations Public Hearing and Study Session. Ian?
Hello. My name is Ian Lefkort. He/him pronouns, Senior Planner with Long Range Planning, and we are here to talk about housing regulations. These are the same package of amendments that has gone forward as an association with the Housing Element Update. We’ve been discussing these items for a couple months now, and we’ll have a public hearing on the most revised version that was shared out. So we’ll go through this presentation, just get a little rebrief. We’ll go through our public comments, and then we can go through the issues matrix, which is nearly closed, and hear from Director Holland about this topic. There’s the agenda for the presentation, is what are the asks, the summary, the actual recommendation, and the timeline. So the two big questions in front of the Commission tonight are: Do the amendments align with the Redmond 2050 themes? We’ve got equity and inclusion, resilience, sustainability. And the second is, is the Planning Commission ready to provide a recommendation? So as we go through this content, please keep those questions in the back of your mind as you talk with Carol or Mike Stanger from Arch, and we’ll help walk through any of the pieces. Here’s the summary. We won’t read all of these pieces, but broadly speaking, they’re about the affordable housing bonus density on religious lands, making sure that there is parameters for fee and lieu, changes to inclusionary zoning parameters for Overlake specifically. We added a pioneer provision for that change, added clarity on how income certification and household incomes are considered, tried to make more inclusive language, really just incorporate all of those pieces that our stakeholders and Commissioners have discussed, where we’ve added that new section on live-work units. We’ve made updates to the 2157 about those various supportive housings, and updated the definitions also to support affordable housing as an accessory used to faith-based Here are the inclusionary zoning recommendations for Overlake. For rentals, 12.5% of units at 50% AMI. That is the affordability level that is identified as the greatest housing need of our growth allocations. And for ownership, it would be 12.5% of units at 80% AMI. And here’s the timeline to date. So we’ve got our public hearing and study session today. We are scheduled to have a pure study session on the 24th, but if the Commission is ready to make a recommendation, we could move the recommendation up to the 24th and then request a report approval on the 31st. And with that, I would recommend that we open up the public comments.
Yes, I agree. So we’ll open up the public hearing. And who has signed up?
First, we have David M.
I’m David Morton, 19934, Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond, 98053. Attachment A for tonight’s Agenda Item 5 contains comprehensive allowed uses charts. According to the chart for non-residential zones, the Northeast Design Districts 2 and 3, abbreviated NDD 2 and NDD 3, allow, among others, the following use classes: solid waste transfer and recycling, hazardous waste treatment and storage, educational, daycare center, family daycare provider, food and beverage, golf course, government and administration, institutional health and human services, crop production, roadside produce stands. That’s right, in NDD 2 and 3, you can drop your kids off at a daycare center located next door to a hazardous waste treatment and storage facility. If your young son is fascinated by watching trucks, he may find interest in watching tank trucks loading and offloading shipments of hazardous waste. The information presented in the chart raises concerns about the juxtaposition of seemingly incompatible land uses within NDD 2 and 3. The list of allowed use classes, particularly the co-location of a daycare center with hazardous waste treatment and storage facilities, could be perceived as problematic. The list raises questions about the zoning regulations and planning considerations in place. It’s essential to carefully assess and regulate land use to ensure the safety and well-being of residents, especially in areas where potentially hazardous activities coexist with more sensitive uses like educational and daycare facilities. Concerned parties ought to engage with Redmond’s Planning Department to seek clarification on how such land uses are managed and regulated within NDD 2 and 3. Addressing these concerns could involve revisiting or amending zoning regulations to mitigate potential risks and ensure the compatibility of land uses in NDD 2 and 3. Additionally, community input and involvement in the decision-making process could play a crucial role in shaping a more balanced and safer urban environment. Also, the area zoned for industrial in southeast Redmond lies almost entirely on Critical Aquifer Recharge Area 1, or CARA 1. See the map in my email. Redmond Municipal Code lists the prohibited land uses and activities in CARA 1. Among the prohibited uses in CARA 1 are solid waste transfer stations and hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities. Yet, the comprehensive allowed uses chart for non-residential zones shows that solid waste transfer and recycling and hazardous waste treatment and storage are among the allowed uses in the industrial zone. How can solid waste transfer and recycling and hazardous waste treatment and storage be allowed in an industrial zone which lies almost entirely on CARA 1, where those land uses are prohibited? The apparent discrepancy between the prohibited land uses in CARA 1 and the allowed uses in the industrial zone, which lies almost entirely within CARA 1, raises significant concerns. Redmond Municipal Code explicitly prohibits certain land uses and activities in CARA 1, including solid waste transfer stations and hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities. However, the comprehensive allowed uses chart for non-residential zones shows the industrial zone permits solid waste transfer and recycling as well as hazardous waste treatment and storage. This contradiction suggests a conflict between zoning regulations and the CARA protection measures. Please review and address this issue, possibly by revisiting zoning ordinances to align them with environmental protection goals, updating regulations to reflect more stringent prohibitions in CARAs, or by implementing additional safeguards to minimize environmental risks. Please engage with the community and relevant stakeholders to ensure transparency and gather input on potential solutions. Try to strike a balance between industrial activities and environmental conservation, especially when dealing with sensitive, critical areas like CARAs. Resolving this inconsistency will contribute to Redmond’s sustainable and responsible development. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Next is Andrew C.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Great. Andrew Calkins, 4710 40th Avenue Southwest, Seattle, Washington, 98116. Good evening, Commissioners. My name’s Andrew Calkins. I’m the Vice President of Policy and Intergovernmental Affairs at the King County Housing Authority, and I also co-chair the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. Tonight, I’m speaking in support of the staff-recommended changes to the Overlake affordable housing requirements. The housing authority I work for, along with the organizations this coalition represents, are each committed to addressing the affordable housing crisis across the community and the region. We understand that to effectively combat displacement, homelessness, and rent burdens resulting from high housing costs, we must leverage every available tool at our disposal. The urgency of the affordable housing needs in the region continue to be alarming. According to data from the state of Washington and the Lake Washington School District specifically, the number of students experiencing homelessness has surged to 447 in the current school year, a stark increase of over 200 students just two years ago. As we all know, housing affordability is a pressing issue that demands a multifaceted approach. It’s impacting people every day. Mandatory inclusionary zoning programs, like those being considered today, present an effective strategy to integrate affordable housing into new developments. This not only addresses the immediate housing needs, but we believe also fosters the integration of low-income families into all parts of the community, especially in proximity to the significant public transit investments in the Overlake area. We specifically appreciate the emphasis on allocating 12.5% of the units as affordable for families with incomes less than 50% of area median income for rental housing and 80% for homeownership. The 50% requirement for rental in particular aligns with where the most acute housing needs are in this community. It’s also important to remember that when the city increases development capacity, there is no turning back in increasing affordable requirements later. Each expansion in development capacity enhances property values, and it’s the city’s responsibility to ensure that the newfound value translates into benefits for the entire community. Should all of the increased value from the zoning change be a windfall to the property owner, or should it be used to capture additional public benefits? We argue for the latter in the form of affordable housing. Notably, staff’s analysis shows that development feasibility is improved under this proposal. We believe the city must take the long view and recognize that it is making policy that will guide multiple development cycles. Lastly, urge the Planning Commission to be bold and advance the recommended changes to the Overlake affordable housing requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Damiano B. Jesse S.
Hey, good evening. I’m Jesse Simpson, the Government Relations and Policy Manager at the Housing Development Consortium, 605 East Anyway, Seattle Law. Here to speak just in favor of the staff recommendations around the Overlake inclusionary zoning requirements, increasing the set aside, and focusing on 50% of area median income and below. Want to first stress the importance of this 50% area median income threshold. This is where Redmond’s most pressing housing needs lie. I think we can sometimes get lost in talking about AMI and lose track of who we’re really speaking about, but it’s, you know, people making up to $47,000 as a single person. This is people who are low-wage workers in our community, who are absolutely essential to the functioning of our economy and society. It covers the range of working people who can otherwise never afford to find safe and decent housing anywhere near Redmond. And per the King County Affordable Housing Committee’s need allocations, well over 70% of Redmond’s housing needs over the next 20 years are at this 50% AMI threshold and below. So I just want to emphasize that point. Conceptually, HDC is strongly in support of inclusionary zoning. We believe it’s fundamentally a good way to capture the value created by upzones, as well as ensuring that we’re creating new equitable opportunities inside the housing that’s being developed alongside transit investments. We support the major TOD visions around Overlake and all of the development capacity increases that have been proposed, but we do want to emphasize that with these increases in density, allowed capacity, you are increasing the value of that land. And the increased inclusionary zoning requirements are a way to capture some of that increased value for public benefit in the form of affordable housing. And again, echoing the point that we can only increase that calibration at the time of the upzone. Finally, when it comes to the calibration itself, the 12.5% set aside at 50% AMI, believe staff has done a great job in compiling multiple consultant reports that show that this calibration increases development feasibility across the board. The benefits ratio calculated by both Echo Northwest and Community Attributes is 1.5, so landowner, according to the analysis, is still benefiting relative to current conditions. We know that right now is not a great time to develop, but we think that these are, these are regulations put in place with a view towards the future, towards the 20-year planning cycle during which we’re going to see, hopefully, different economic conditions prevail and development restart. And as that development restarts, we want to see affordable housing for low-wage workers included in, in the transitorian development that we’ll see in Redmond and Overlake. Thank you. Recommend you move forward the staff recommendation. Look forward to partnering.
Thank you.
Next is Steve Y.
Steve Unsmamis, Washington. I want to start by saying that, you know, a lot of hard work and communications have been done over the, what, two, three, four months on this. There has been some improvements, but in my opinion, there hasn’t been enough. I did spend some time reviewing Attachment C. The people who had spoken before had indicated, or that hadn’t really addressed the data on the model, and then the, you know, we did look at what was presented, and we did our own model, and I do have three conclusions that I wanted to relay to the Planning Commission. One is that the third column, the base scenario, I think it’s pretty clear that the conclusion is that it is less financially viable than what’s existing today. In fact, our numbers are a little bit, have a larger spread than what’s on here. And then with the fourth column, with additional density, the, the land hadn’t been adjusted, and so when you account for that, that, essentially, the fourth option would be the same as the third. And then the other conclusion that we’ve made internally is that the MFTE program, there’s been some discussion here and there about it. Us, as a developer, we’re 50/50 on the program. It depends on, you know, the project specifics. I think if you poll the different developers and investors, I think you’d see some people say, yes, we would do it. Some people would say, no. The reason why we’re 50/50 is that the, the tax incentive is only for a short term, whereas affordability is forever, and so it’s really a math equation that a lot of people, you know, will use different inputs, but I do want to be upfront. I believe it’s, it’s a 50/50 value proposition as it is today, ignoring the future, and so I ask that that be more accurately assessed. Taking a step back, you know, from a policy perspective, this, this is my third time here. I wrote two letters. I serve on one Redmond, so I do care. I do care about good policy, and that’s why I’m here today. I want to boil this down into something really simple, I think, which is, you know, when you take a step back, my understanding is the highest priority at the city and with the public is affordable housing, or housing in general. The one comment that’s been consistent with the development and finance community is, is we need help to get there, to support that goal. And so, you know, I, I would ask this group here, the Planning Commission, if the priority of housing is number one, and if there’s an urgency associated with that priority, wouldn’t it make sense that the numbers here are an incentive, screen incentive for the development community to move forward and to help with the process? You know, I do sense that there’s a general desire to increase the affordability, like everyone says here, but I do believe it is very short-sighted to just say, this is what we want, and, and just hope that the development community will get there. I think, and I would challenge everybody, including even the development community, is, is there enough win-win in this current proposal in order to make it a reality? Yes, my predecessors here have indicated, well, we could look at it in terms of 20 years, and maybe, you know, something will get better, but, you know, the housing crisis is now. I mean, I, I would have trouble believing that everybody here would feel comfortable with a proposal today, knowing that essentially, if it moves forward, that it would halt production of housing because it’s not as accretive right now, and developers need all the help we can get. A couple minor things that, that could help, you know, if we’re going to go to options three or four, include a 12-year MFTE, a 12-year MFTE with a 12-year option. Make it a real incentive, because right now, it’s not there, and I, I haven’t heard anyone really address, how could the Planning Commission and the city create the incentive for us to fulfill the goals of housing and affordable housing? And I think that’s being missed, to be, to be candid with you, I think we’re almost there as far as identifying what we need, but we’re not there, and just creating a goal without a pathway for the developers to get there is, I think, is a mistake, and so I’m asking in the, the discussion, that the Planning Commission and the city of Redmond and the development community all really assess that, because right now, it’s, I, I can’t see developers helping out with the process with what’s being shown here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Katie K.
Katie Kendall. So we all want affordable housing. I don’t think there’s any doubt about that, and I want to make sure that you understand that the development community wants that as well. The question is, how do we get there? And the questions you guys have to grapple with are, how much, how much of a risk are you willing to take, and what consequences are you ready to bear? And the proposed plan puts all of the city’s eggs in one basket to address these affordable housing gap. It means for the city to be successful, development must actually occur. It’s not going to for quite some time under this scenario, which means it won’t address the immediate and pressing need for more affordable housing. And we can grapple on the model all day long. It doesn’t matter. It doesn't matter. You have people that are the ones that are finding the sites, developing the pro forma, actually getting the bank loans, getting the permits, building the city's infrastructure, building the streets, and constructing projects, saying this is not going to work. So how much of a risk are you willing to take that we're all wrong? And by the time it is economically viable to build 12.5% of your units at 50% AMI, we've created an even bigger problem, and I think it's really important to understand what happens in that interim. We get skyrocketing market rents because we don't have any supply coming in, and we create an even larger affordability gap. In other words, using more aggressive inclusionary zoning regulations creates an endless loop. Make it difficult in a down economy for the housing providers to build housing. Housing providers then wait or look elsewhere to construct. In the interim, those who can afford to live in Redmond will continue to do so and will displace those who no longer can afford to live here. There are studies that explain all of this, and then when rents rise so high in Redmond that developers can absorb the significant hit to the pro forma, development will begin again. You may have seen in public comments since you that it would take rents at $6 a foot or $6,000 for a two-bedroom apartment to make the numbers work here, based on some studies that were done. We don't have to look very far to know whether I'm, you know, right or wrong. You can look in downtown Redmond. In the 90s, when the city passed inclusionary zoning requirements, no one built there for years. Instead, they were building, you know, in the outskirts or in other areas of the east side. And then when rents finally rose enough to make it affordable, that's when they built. And that is part of the endless loop of creating a larger affordability gap. So I just want you to understand the consequences of, I think, inclusionary zoning, it feels good, it makes sense, it sounds good, but does it actually develop the kind of housing at the time that we need the housing, which is now? So if you're worried that the city's proposed solution may not work, it may not result in the housing, and make rents higher for those that, and make it harder for people that are 51% AMI and above, then let's work on solutions that work for everybody. And there's a few proven ways that we can do this. One, and Steve mentioned this, but keep inclusionary zoning as is or make less sweeping changes, and instead incentivize the production of deeper affordable units with a 12-year MFT program and 12-year extension to just get the housing going more quickly. And I know this isn't your purview, and I know you can't really opine on it, but this way, the starting point doesn't already cripple development, and so we don't have to wait. We can start at a better spot and then encourage and incentivize through it 50% or 40% if the MFT, MFT works. And this worked in Seattle. In 2022 alone, 22 projects totaling 3,700 rental units, including almost 800 MFT units and 12 ownership units, were issued final certificates of tax exemption. The city currently has 217 owner-occupied MFT units and over 8,500 active MFT rental units, because their MFT program works to incentivize that MFT structure, and there are varying levels of affordability throughout there. Another option is to provide for a workable fee-in-loo program. The proposed fee-in-loo program in the code is overly restrictive and isn't really allowed to be used unless there's a project waiting for the money. That doesn't create a real option, but if you have a lot of money to dole out, the affordable housing providers will come and take that money. And I think Seattle is, again, a good example. For all of their faults, they've done a pretty good job with affordable housing. Their mandatory housing affordability program allows for you to build units in your building or pay a fee. Most people pay a fee. From the city's 2022 report for projects with issued building permits in that year, 66 units were provided as inclusionary housing at 60% AMI. And then with the money that was received, which was about $85 million in total, 990 new affordable rental apartments are going to be created. Loans to secure seven sites that will support future development of 380 new rental units was created. 95 permanently affordable for-sale homes at six sites are going to be created, and millions of dollars were given to stabilize homes through home repair program, weatherization, and clean heat program. So there are options that we should consider that aren't just the blanket 12.5% at 50%, so that we can get housing in here now or as soon as possible, I guess I should say. And I've heard concerns that fee-in-loo program defers the production of housing because it's not in the building. And truly, it doesn't, and especially if you combine it with, I'm sorry. First, it's going to take a long time for the market to catch up here, and if we have a fee-in-loo program, we can get housing in. And in Seattle, the MHA program requires you to build, give the money out within a year. So there can be restrictions and requirements that create that program, so that we're actually maybe even seeing housing, affordable housing faster by using a fee-in-loo program rather than just waiting and hoping the market gets there. And just to shift to the, there's been a, I'm sorry, proposed pioneer project. The proposed pioneer project in the code allows the first 400 units to be developed at a slightly higher affordability level, or, you know, slightly better affordability level for development. In Overlake, 400 units is one project. One project is not going to spur development, does nothing to really transition the market into continuing to build housing. We recommend that you look at the Kirkland Pioneer Project Regulations that were just passed. They actually say that the reduced requirements, and it's a very complicated formula, but the reduced requirements would be in place until a certain number of units are built, which is actually a percentage of the additional units they're allowing there, or the end of 2025, whatever is later. So there can be a time limit, there can be some transition here, and I would encourage you to consider that as we try to figure out how we can get housing as soon as possible into Redmond. Thank you very much.
That is it for individuals who signed up, but we do have some folks who will want to be called in virtually, and I will call them now.
Hello?
Hello, this is the Redmond Planning Commission for the public hearing related to housing element regulations. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. This is Matt Corsi, Seattle, 98109. I manage the Seattle office of Carmel Partners. We're a private REIT. We build multifamily rental housing. I'm currently managing the development of 570-unit apartment project in Overlake. I'm a lifelong local. I've been in design and development for about 35 years. I am here to address the proposal the city submitted to the Planning Commission regarding the changes in code that increase the number of affordable units required in multifamily developments that we've all been talking about here. Specifically, I'm focused on the 12.5% of units at 50% AMI. I also agree there is a huge need for housing at that income level. However, the analysis of the affordable housing proposal that's been presented has raised some serious concern with those who provide housing. The intention is to increase the number of affordable units in Redmond, and the real effect would be to produce fewer affordable units, as the requirement will make development of these types of projects infeasible for many years, according to my analysis. Kenmore is a great example of this. They pushed this type of concept too far, and no development has been done since that legislation was passed. The analysis used to support the code change is flawed and does not represent the reality of how apartment projects are underwritten and built. The assumptions are not valid, and the results misstate the impact of the changes being proposed. So I have a real-life example here. My company's developing eight-story building in Overlake. Under current codes, we use the current incentives for heightened density bonuses to get to an eight-story building, and we are including 10% of the units at 80% AMI, considering going with the 5% at 50% AMI. My analysis shows, taking today's numbers where that project is, and we're moving forward with entitlements, well, we plan on starting construction in September, that if we make this change, the IRR drops 15%, yield on cost drops 6%. So what does this mean? In order to get our returns back to the same level that we're at today, which isn't great in this economy, this equates to a $19.5 million drop in land price. That's a 69% drop in the land price. Landowners will not accept this level of discount, which means they won't sell, and people like me and Steve Yun, who spoke earlier, won't be able to acquire land. If we make it up in rent, so the rent we need to increase in our project to about $6.10 a square foot, that's a 56% increase in rent, or $4,575 a month for a 750-square-foot one-bedroom apartment. Nobody wants to see that. This, again, means that development won't happen. There are other cities who have enacted this type of legislation. It adds costs to the development of housing with good intention, and we all agree there is a serious need for housing, I think, at middle and low-income levels. We all want to create equity in the market and more affordable housing, but we need to do it in a way that's sustainable and achievable by housing providers. This proposal, I think, is going to have the opposite effect of what the intention is, as many people have spoken about already. I also want to mention the concept of housing filtering, and this is a concept that's well-understood and well-studied, is where new housing is built in a market and keeps pace with demand. The result is that older housing becomes less expensive, the oldest housing becomes the most affordable. Programs that stop the flow of new housing into any market result in every tier of housing becoming more expensive, that job growth continues, and those with the most income bid up rental rates. The lowest-income earners suffer the most, the middle-income earners are also impacted, and you end up with high-income earners dominating a market because there simply isn't enough housing to go around. The people with the most money pay for the housing, and our analysis shows that in five years, the lowest-income levels essentially get pushed out of Redmond if housing demand continues at the rate it is and housing production slows. A proven solution is to reduce barriers to building housing and let the market self-regulate with enough housing to serve all income levels. I oppose this proposal as it prohibits private development in Overlake and creates a housing shortage. Some level of affordable housing in new developments is appropriate and supported by all developers I encounter. We all want mixed housing types that serve all income levels, and those building housing know this proposal will not achieve that outcome. The data strongly supports this conclusion. Housing affordability is a real issue, and there is not enough housing currently or planned. This is the root of this problem. Demand has outpaced supply for many years, and lack of affordability is the result. Again, the data supports this conclusion, and markets that have lower barriers to entry typically have lower housing costs. I would love to work with the city on further investigating alternatives that allow for more housing to be built with a focus on providing affordable and market-rate housing to meet the growth demands in Redmond. If we do not meet all housing demands as population grows, the affordable housing crisis will not be addressed. I do support a fee-in-loo program, as well as a reasonable inclusionary program at a level the market can support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carl Charette.
Hello, you're on with the Redmond Planning Commission Public Hearing on Housing Regulations. State your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Carl Charette. My address is 1618 35th Avenue, Seattle, Washington, 98122. Good evening to everyone. My name, again, Carl Charette, Seattle-on-Bay Communities, a local multifamily developer that's built thousands of apartments in Redmond and across the east side. I'm speaking tonight on the proposed Redmond 2050 Housing Elements Affordable Housing Regulations from city staff and ARC. The current economy challenges the delivery of multifamily housing on the east side and throughout our region. High interest rates, high construction costs, and tightening capital markets are already resulting in a diminished pipeline, and there is no anticipated relief on the horizon. Yes, real estate does remain a cyclical industry, but this combination of headwinds is uniquely chilling for housing development. One of the reasons for our current crisis is that it took many years for multifamily production to recover after the Great Recession. We implore you to use the past as a lesson and do everything you can to speed production of housing in this market, so that we not find ourselves in an even deeper housing crisis in five years. There's no debate that this proposed affordable housing regulation further challenges the viability of new multifamily housing production. Staff memos even state that they, quote, "recognize that the current economic conditions are prohibitive of development financial feasibility," unquote. "Facing new housing policy on recommendations that do not pencil in today's market is not a sound approach and undermines the production goals outlined in the city's housing strategy plan." I appreciate that the plan is looking through current challenges to potential feasibility in the future, and while I wish I shared your staff's optimism of a near-term return to boom times, our internal models to Seattle-on-Bay disagree. Even under the rosiest of assumptions, we project multifamily development in Redmond will remain indefinitely even feasible if the proposed affordable requirements are implemented. Further, the recommendation to increase the mandatory requirements to 12.5% at 50% AMI leaves out a significant population of need at varying AMI levels. Anyone earning above 50% of AMI, approximately $50,000 for an individual, are excluded from the opportunity to benefit from these subsidized units. These are teachers, nurses, and caregivers who would be excluded and have to pay higher fair market rents that this deep affordability skew necessitates. Further, the city's own consultant report illustrates that new construction rents north of $6 a foot would be required to justify new construction if this proposal moves forward. We really want to see housing production grind to a halt until one-bedroom rents, one-bedrooms rent for nearly $4,000 a month. Is the potential trade-off of decreased near-term, new near-term housing production the intended goal of these policies, or simply a sacrifice the city is willing to make to ensure production of a small quantity of affordable apartments at some point in the next 10 to 12 years? Said plainly, new apartments are unlikely to get built in Redmond with private capital if this proposal moves forward. These are significant policy decisions that will have long-term ripple effects for both developers and capital evaluating new housing investments in Redmond and deserve further consideration as part of the Redmond 2050 Housing Elements. Any new projects or any new policies that add cost or time to build new housing should not be considered. These policies, however well-intended, exacerbate our housing crisis and have already created a multi-year strain on housing supply at all income levels. With this in mind, we and developers ask that the commission take these very real economic realities into consideration before advancing new affordable housing requirements that could have a significant impact on future housing supply and affordability. Thank you.
Next, we have Abby D., calling them now.
Hi, this is Abby.
Welcome to the public hearing at the Planning Commission for Housing Regulations. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ian. My name is Abigail Dewey. My address is 999 Third Avenue, Seattle, Washington. I'm a local land use attorney at the Hillis Clark Firm, where I represent both affordable housing and market-rate housing developers. I'm also the Governmental Affairs Committee Chair for NAOP, our state's commercial real estate association, and I'm speaking tonight on their behalf. As you've heard from several local developers tonight, including those who've developed in the city of Redmond, we are very concerned that the inclusionary proposal advanced by staff for Overlake will not work to produce more housing in the city. We all agree that more housing is necessary, and a component of that housing should be affordable, but we believe advancing proposals that do not pencil today and will not pencil for an indefinite future is not the right answer. Some others have mentioned this statistic, but I find it very compelling, that in order for the proposed inclusionary proposal to actually pencil under today's conditions, market-rate rents will need to rise to $6 a square foot. For a 1,000-square-foot, two-bedroom apartment, this means a $6,000 rent per month. This is double the current rents today and isn't, I think, what is the right answer for Redmond. So we're very concerned about this proposal. We've also noted the inclusion of a pioneer provision in the code. As Ms. Kendall cited, the number of units in that provision isn't sufficient to actually kind of bridge this gap of the current market conditions. We think that there are other ways to write a pioneer provision that could better bridge the market conditions right now, in particular, breaking down the city's necessary unit production on an annual basis and having some sort of trigger where these policies actually don't- actually don't go into effect at all until the market is recovered to the extent that there are building permits issued at a rate that is sufficient to meet the city's housing goals. So we're really concerned that this is going to completely stop the market, and if you don't believe us, that's great, but prove it, right? You should implement something that basically doesn't have this go into effect until the housing is actually being produced at the level that we need to meet market demand. So we would really like you to consider that. I just also wanted to comment really briefly on one of the other things that is in the regulation package tonight, and that is the additional density bonus for religious properties. We fully support this proposal and believe the city should advance it. I would note that there is one element of the proposal that I found confusing, which says, "A religious organization in ownership or control of the property being developed must pay all fees, mitigation costs, and other charges required through the development of the affordable housing project." In my experience, it's likely that the religious organization is going to partner with a developer, and so putting the burden on the religious organization itself to pay those fees feels odd, and I don't think it's really the intent of the city, so maybe that's something that could be clarified. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment tonight and for your service to the city of Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Cliff C., calling them now.
Hello, this is Cliff.
Hi, you're on with the Redmond Planning Commission's Public Hearing on Housing Regulations. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, so my name is Clifford Carl Hawthorne. I'm the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle, King County, and the co-chair of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. We are, or I am based at 500 Notches Avenue Southwest in Renton, Washington. Anyway, I am happy to join all of you tonight. So I'm here, I'm calling in tonight to support these code amendments, to urge the commission to take bolder steps towards, rather forward, per the Renton 2050 themes and goals. Habitat for Humanity of Seattle, King County, and the District of the Region for 38 years as a permanently affordable housing provider, and I should add, we are one of the biggest in the entire state. The East Side Affordable Housing Coalition, as well as my colleague Andrew pointed out in his earlier testimony, is composed of organizations like Habitat, like KCHA, and also the Housing Development Consortium, just to name a few. So first of all, I want to say kudos to staff for developing this report and crunching the numbers. I believe that increase in development capacity should include additional benefits for the public in the form of affordable housing, and I would argue that these suggested amendments aren't going to halt housing. Instead, they'll create the conditions for affordable housing because we can not, simply cannot, sorry, we simply cannot depend upon market forces to develop affordability. Yes, we are in the middle of a supply crisis, but also we are in the middle of an affordability crisis, that each time the city adds development capacity to an area, it's essentially increasing the value of that property. And the most concrete benefit to that increased value, or that we can gain from that increased value, is affordable housing, not simply a private-sector windfall. As a developer, I understand that a project needs to pencil, yet simply providing break after break without investments and affordability will not create affordable housing. We have seen that in Seattle, we have seen that in Kirkland, we have seen that in other cities where they have instituted inclusionary programs, including even Bellevue back in the day, when they had inclusionary program, and it produced over, I believe, in one year over 170 affordable units, if memory serves. And that kind of deep affordability in unit production is what we need to see across the region. We need all the tools that we can create to address the affordable housing crisis, and I think these proposed amendments do provide us with many of these tools, and they include mandatory inclusionary zoning. They include one that allows for both rental and also increased AMI for homeownership projects. It also includes allowing for increased residential density on nonprofit and faith-owned lands, as well as a well-calibrated fee-and-lease program that allows certain flexibility for affordable housing development, as well as a well-regulated MFT program that will allow an affordable housing or an affordable homeownership project to pencil out. But simply just doing one without the other is simply ignoring tools that we have in order to make affordability happen. For example, we've worked with jurisdictions on the East Side to build cottages, townhomes, duplexes for the first-time homebuyers. In Bellevue, right now, we are working in partnership with Holy Cross Lutheran Church, which is going to, which we're going to be developing more than 20 units for first-time homebuyers, and those are folks that are earning 80% AMI. So bus drivers, grocery store workers, nurses, teachers, all those folks who cannot afford to live in Bellevue and will have a chance to live near where they work. And I would paint a similar scenario for, or rather, I would say that we can make similar things happen in Redmond if we move forward with these proposed code amendments. Now, I can talk about several of our other projects, but I don't want to take up more of your time. I'm just going to end on the reality that we have a lot of work to do, that according to King County's own Housing Needs Assessment, that the city of Redmond, at least for folks who are making 50% AMI, as well as in other categories, still needs to develop a lot of housing if it's going to meet, if the city of Redmond is going to meet the housing goals by 2044, or hopefully sooner. We can do better. The policies you consider should not simply halt because we're worried about the nature of the market, the nature is cyclical, that you're going to see market fluctuations, and as my colleague said earlier, that we have to take a long view of market conditions instead of a shorter view. And I would really emphasize that, that let's move boldly towards deeper affordability to create the affordable housing we need, and everyone can have a safe, decent, and affordable place to live. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
That is everyone who signed up.
Okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing for verbal comment and leave it open for written.
I would like to invite Director Helen up and Mike Stenger from ARCH.
Good evening, commissioners. It's good to see you all. I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director here at the city of Redmond, and I would just like to say how much we appreciate the people who have come and engaged in this conversation and helped us refine the proposal that's before you tonight. We don't take comments that we receive from anyone lightly, not the public, not the community that's building, the development community that's building the housing that we need, not the people that live in the housing, not the, basically, no one that participates in this process. And our staff has had hundreds of meetings at this point with community members, developers, to shape the proposals that are before you. And I just want to tell you a few things about how I feel about the housing proposal that's before you this evening, just because I wrote down some comments while I was sitting here, and I live in Redmond, I care deeply about this place, I raised my kids here, I'd love them to live here. One is still living in my basement because he can't afford a place to live. My daughter is living with three other people because she can't afford a place to live. I get it. So I just want to let you know that the regulations before you this evening are intended to implement the policy objectives that you saw previously in the housing element that you reviewed as part of the comprehensive plan, and the regulations are focused on where the greatest need is. As one of our speakers said, 70% of our need in Redmond is focused at 50% or less, and that's a lot. Estimated housing need is by far the greatest for households earning 50% or AMI or below in Redmond, and so we have to figure out ways to supply that housing. The recommended regulatory approach is supported by the Redmond 2050 theme of equity and inclusion because the households at lower AMIs experience a greater share of cost burden, an extreme cost burden compared to higher AMIs. And I wanted to also say, we've heard from private developers, and we've heard from nonprofit developers this evening, and they share different points of view. Private development is not the only source of affordable housing, and I don't want you to have too narrow a focus on the regulations that are before you. We need to build on the current success of our inclusionary zoning and MFT program and calibrate it now to the specific circumstances and needs in our community. And we also know that inclusionary zoning and MFT cannot solve all of our affordable housing issues. And so the regulations before you this evening, I remind you, are only one facet of Redmond's commitment to deliver on affordable housing supply, and there are plenty of other tools. And none of those get mentioned because most of them don't come to the Planning Commission, but it doesn't mean they don't exist. There's the Housing Trust Fund that public subsidy focused on households earning up to 30% AMI. We are actually, as part of this process, in other places in the regulations, increasing overall supply through density increases aimed at 80% AMI and above. Middle Housing, which was mandated by the state, we're doubling density in Overlake Village and more than doubling density in OBAT and OVMF, and where increases are expected in other centers as well later in this year, when you come to review those. We, as a city, are making contributions of public land. We're looking at the place where Motley Zoo used to house our pets. Hopefully, they're going to be housing some of our population in need in Redmond in subsidized housing. We are lobbying for Section 8 vouchers to reduce rents for people who can't afford to live or to fill the rent gap, and we're supporting shelters and permanent supportive housing in our community as well that serve people who may not be able to even pay a 30% rent, 30% AMI rent. We're also providing seed money to subsidize low-income projects. We made a general fund contribution for these two years of $10 million. I don't see that need or that capacity to deliver going away with this council. I really don't. We have $14.06, which was something created by the legislature recently that we funneled to ARCH, and then ARCH actually has its Housing Trust Fund that we use on a community basis to provide housing at those lowest levels of housing. You know, we talked about the 900 units that have been developed through inclusionary zoning and MFT, and that is great. And I did hear some things tonight where people said it didn't help, housing didn't come back in the early '90s when we imposed this regulation. Well, interestingly enough, if you look at how the program actually, like, grew, you know, 2008, the Great Recession was commented, we have had steady additions to our affordable housing supply since 2008, and there hasn't been much of a dip. And I just wanted to say something about the ARCH program. We just recently committed $600,000 to rehab at Emma McRedmond in additional funds to the ARCH Housing Trust Fund, and 1.8 million to the Bellwether Project that is in our TOD area. Those are going to be providing almost 1,000 units of affordable housing in the spans of three years compared to, I get what we're asking the developers to do, is incrementally produce some share, and we are appreciative for that. But we also believe that the models we presented to you all are sound. The CAI consultants worked with the city, the BAE consultants worked with ARCH, we got a lot of feedback from the developers on those models. We invited the stakeholders to review the model, and we received valuable input that we incorporated. And the developers and the stakeholders and the city, based on what I've heard from them, actually agree on the inputs and the outputs. Where we disagree is what to do with that information, and that's your job. And I also don't want, I also want you to remember other places that were not captured in the model where cost is being reduced. So we're reducing or eliminating off-street parking requirements, and that's also on tonight's agenda. You'll be talking about that. We are increasing the FAR, as I spoke to earlier. We will be reducing the amount of time developers spend before our design review board. There is either, we are considering, one, the state has said they can't spend more than one meeting at the design review board, so that will limit the amount of time that they spend in permitting. And we have bantered around the idea of essentially exempting projects that are at that below high-rise level from design review board review at all. That saves time, which saves money. I also wanted to note that we're working hard to meet permit timelines that are imposed by the state legislature, and I also heard one of the developers say, well, we were able to use the incentives that were given as part of the current code to achieve our maximum height and FAR. Well, the code that is proposed eliminates the need to use incentives to get in Overlake to achieve the development maximum height and FAR that's allowed before type-one construction is required. So they won't have to rely on incentives or benefits other than the affordable housing requirement, and that has been something the developers have been asking. It's like, what's the most important thing to you? I think what we're indicating is affordable housing is the most important thing to us right now. I just wanted to note that the inclusionary zoning and MFT options before you are not the thing that are going to stop development right now. Development's not a go right now, and it feels like the testimony that we're hearing would be akin to in 2008 when the Great Recession was happening, saying, "You should repeal your inclusionary zoning requirement because we can't build." That's not a reasonable approach for us to dismantle a program that has worked for us over the years. We recognize there are things that we need to do to accelerate the speed of development, but dismantling a program isn't the answer. And the new inclusionary zoning and MFT options that are before you, combined with the other improvements to the code that I mentioned, will create a development yield on cost which is roughly equal to the yield in cost of the current code, which means if they can't build it under the incentives that we're proposing, they're not going to be able to build it under the current code either. That's not a justification for us to delete that provision or change it significantly. So as such, all things being equal, development will occur as quickly as it would occur under the status quo, and we recognize that that's hard. And economic conditions, I think Cliff spoke to that, have peaks and valleys. Eventually, the economic conditions will improve and development will occur. We saw that when we put in place the last inclusionary zoning provision. And we do have the pioneer provisions. Areas where we might solicit feedback from the commission is, are those pioneer provisions adequate? Is there some flexibility that you would like to put there? We also have transition provisions to protect those who are already in the pipeline, so developers who would like to proceed under the current code can, will be allowed to continue to do so, and that will save them some cost and money. And we have been mulling another option of kind of a safety valve. If you essentially adopt the provisions that are recommended by staff as a safe harbor, that those are the ones that work, you have a very smooth permitting process, that you could also consider putting in a requirement or an option for someone to pursue a development agreement to put forward a different public benefit packet at a different AMI level. agreement to put forward a different public benefit packet at a different AMI level. So that could be something you could consider adding. I know the Planning Commission has discussed this option a lot, and you've had a lot of testimony. And the issue was matrix, I've reviewed and believe there's, the staff have spent a lot of time trying to respond to your comments. And the charge is yours at this point to decide what's best for the community. And basically, we need you to act and develop a recommendation because we still have a lot of work to do this year. And those are my remarks. Just wanted to weigh in. I know I don't see you very often, but thought it was an important enough topic to come this evening. And Ian and Mike and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, we appreciate you coming. I want to take a moment and exercise my privilege as chair and eight years of Planning Commission to add a few more comments on yours. And I'm going to start with the idea that our mayor ran on, which is that everyone who works in Redmond ought to have the option of living in Redmond. And that's not true now. And we can't count on market rate housing to make that true. We can't build enough market rate housing to make that true. Because Redmond is blessed or cursed, depending on which view you want to look at it, with, with a lot of high-paying jobs. And so when you have a lot of high-paying jobs and not enough housing, rents are going to be expensive. And we can't build enough market rate housing to change that fact. So we have to have some solution to that problem. And there is no magic solution to it that's going to solve all the problems, that's going to make it all just suddenly work. We have seen mandatory Inclusionary Zoning build more house, more affordable housing units in Redmond than in any other city, than all the other cities on the East Side Community preference, as I understand it, is for Inclusionary Zoning, for affordable housing to be along with market rate housing, not in separate developments. No one wants to stop development. No one wants to stop housing. Well, there are people in Redmond who want to stop development, but no one on this commission wants to stop development. We want to continue to develop housing. And we need affordable housing. And I have been, I don't see a solution for this that has, that works better than mandatory Inclusionary Zoning. That's, that's where I am. For us to ever get to the kind of vacancy rate that would drive down rents would be a disaster because we wouldn't have any jobs. We'd all be hurting. So Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you, Chair. And I, you've said this all so well. I just wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things because there were some comments in, from the public which were indicating affordable housing across the city, but we're focused on these regulations for Overlake currently. That is, just, just a sort of comment. The other thing that I actually wanted to talk about was understanding what wiggle room would be there in the Pioneer provisions that Director Helen was talking about, just to understand how far we could go with that, or if, if, if that is something we want to discuss. And also, Director Helen, you mentioned an alternative benefits package, and I didn't quite understand that. If you could, please expand on that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure, I can do both. Thank you for the question. The first one was about the Pioneer provision, Pioneer provision. And right now, the way it's structured is it's 200 dwelling units at 70%, 80%, 200 dwelling units at 60%. And then it goes, so it phases in the requirement. We heard this evening that, I think from Mr. Corsi, that he, for instance, has a project that's over 500 dwelling units. Perhaps that number of the 200 and 200 is too low. That's an area where you could explore opportunity in the short run to incent development. The other interesting thing is with the lower parking allowance, it would be interesting, I think, to combine that with an incentive to, a pioneer incentive that lowered the parking requirement because it reduces costs quite a bit, eliminates cars from our, our centers. And one of the things that we've heard about parking is that the banks won't underwrite projects with low parking ratios. And as a result, until we have comparables, it, there aren't low parking, there aren't proposals for it. And once we get comparables, maybe there will be. That would be another thing that could be a combination, that you could request lower parking ratios in return for achieving those comparables that might incent or allow or reduce barriers to achieving lower parking ratios in the future. The last, the second comment that I made, Commissioner Aparna, was about the process called the Development Agreement. It's a state law allowance under the Growth Management Act where you can specify in your codes a process path for deviating under certain circumstances if you can demonstrate that the benefit to the public is equal or better. And in that case, it would be, you'd get the streamlined process of going through the timelines and the streamlined development, Design Review Board, and all of those things that we're trying to do if you use the straight-up process that you're considering or the substantive requirements you're considering. Or you could go through a more complex process and get a built-to-suit benefits package for your, that's aligned with your project. Development agreements by their nature require a council approval.
So I, I apologize because I, I still don't have my head completely wrapped around the Pioneer provision stuff because I missed all of those meetings. So the Pioneer provision is just for one project to take advantage of? Is that correct?
They're on page, let's see.
Forty-one.
Of your packet material.
And the Pioneer provision does not regulate by project. It's just that the staggered effect of the first 200 units and the second 200 units means that the total amount of units before the base requirements that are actually the 12.5% at 50, before that kicks in, 400 units total.
400 units total.
So that could be in a few different development projects, it could be in one. But whenever that total is reached at each of those thresholds, that's when that next level of affordability requirements activates.
Okay. We've heard some references to Kirkland's Pioneer provisions. Would it, could we ask for some comparisons to Kirkland?
We can't, do you, can you speak to that? You've been involved in Kirkland, haven't you?
Right. You're asking for some comparisons?
Yeah.
How do you mean?
Well, in terms of, you know, this is what we've proposed here in Redmond, and we've heard some references that Kirkland's is more workable.
Sure. Well, to simplify it, maybe oversimplify it a little bit. They increased their development capacity in the 85th Street Station area by 6,200 something units. And so they set their Pioneer incentive limit at 6, at 10% of that. Or until the end of 2025, whichever is later.
We.
Go ahead.
Sorry, can I clarify? Was that just for the 85th Station area?
Just for that station area.
Across Kirkland, just the station area?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
We thought this was a more straightforward approach. The Kirkland approach seemed a little complex to us, but, or welcome to the Planning Commission feedback on that topic.
Commissioner Van Nymen.
I just want to really thank you for coming. I think your comments have been very helpful. I continue to have reservations, but I really do think you've, you've helped me with some of them. So one of the things that you did tonight that I've been asking for is giving the bigger picture of all the different types of approaches. But, so I have two related questions to that, and you're not going to have the exact answers What percentage, like we have, let's say we have a goal of, I don't know the number of units, 1,000 units. What percentage do we anticipate 100, 1,000 affordable units? What percentage is each of these programs contributing to that goal? So specifically then, what percentage is the Inclusionary Zoning contributing? Maybe you know off the top of your head, is it more than 50%? Is it?
Well, I.
I mean approximately, like.
I know, I can, approximately, there's roughly 900 affordable units, if I remember that correctly. And those have been produced since the 90s, 900 units of affordable housing, varying from 50% to 90% in the city. So that's, that gives you a time continuum and an amount. And I can tell you that Together Center had 283 units. Capella, about 300 units? Is it less than that? Bellwether is going to have a similar amount. So considering Capella was the first one, it was pandemic, we're going to deliver roughly the same amount of units in four years.
So over, so when you put together a package of, here are the projections for the affordable housing that we're going to create over the next 10 years. What I'm trying to get at, the reason that I'm asking the question is, you know, what percentage of, over the next 10 years, what percentage is the Inclusionary Zoning contributing to that overall package? And the reason that I'm asking is if the number is small enough, because you, you've mentioned, there's this whole other list of programs that are being, you know, different tools in our toolkit that we're using. I'm really interested in knowing what the percentage is that this particular tool is responsible for. Because if it's a smaller number, we're really sticking our neck out on something that's smaller. Like presumably, this is a bigger contributor. I don't know. But do you see what I'm saying? We have a cacophony of voices telling us that this is really risky. And my background in economics tells me that this is really risky. And I think, as many people here have said, the need is real, but you can't work backwards from the need and say that this is the policy we want. We have to say, this is the policy that will work. And so that's, that, I'll stop there for now. I have some other questions, too. But I really want to understand, what is the, what are all of the tools? I'd like, kind of like to see it listed out. She gave it verbally, so I'd like to see it.
We can put together a graphic.
Put together graphically. And understand what percentage this is contributing. If it's 80%, maybe we need to roll the dice. But here's the other thing, one more quick comment. This is not just about affordable housing. It's not limited to being about affordable housing because if we're wrong, there's no housing being built. So it's, it's all, market-level housing isn't going to get built either. So that's why I've been, I stay up nights thinking about this stuff, this, this subject right here. Because I'm really, it's, it's a gamble. And I, if, if we're wrong and nobody builds for five years, we've gotten ourselves in a huge hole.
And one of the advantages of doing the allowing an off-ramp through a development agreement would, if they wanted to put together a different package and the economic conditions were such that they don't believe they could be successful, that would be a safety valve. I think Jeff has his hand up.
Yeah, I was going to go to Jeff next.
Good evening. I wanted to return to one topic from earlier and then partially answer your question, Commissioner Van Nymen. One element of the Kirkland Pioneer provision that Mike spoke to was the time element. And I wanted to highlight that because the commission has spent some amount of time discussing how it doesn't wish to time the market. And I think that's why there's no time element included in our Pioneer provision, so that however long it takes to get 200 units, that's how long it takes, 400 units, that's how long it takes. And we would recommend that you not include a time provision for the reasons that you're not considering time provisions elsewhere in the regulations. And then to Commissioner Van Nymen's question of, you know, how much, how big a deal are the Inclusionary units? So I looked back, and we have a growth target for Overlake, just Overlake, total housing units between 2019 and 2050, 8,350. So that's the, that's the total that we're looking for. And that aligns with the, in King County, the growth targets and the affordable housing needs add up to the same number. So 8,350, we need, we would need to allocate that across the income spectrum. The 12 and a half, you know, not, not all of those 8,350 will be built by the private market and be subject to the mandatory Inclusionary zoning. So, for example, we have 300-plus units at the Overlake TOD. And you could imagine, you know, a couple other projects like that in the next 25 years in Overlake. So you would need to subtract some from that total and then multiply by 12%. But you're talking about roughly 1,000 mandatory Inclusionary zoning units in Overlake out of the 8,350, plus or minus. So it's a, it's a substantial number, but it's certainly well, well south of half. But it's, but it's about, you know, about 1,000 out of the 8,350.
So that makes me. If it's, we're risking a lot on a small portion of the affordable housing that we're going to get back in return. If we think that we're building, if it's only an eighth of the total.
Yeah, that's what 12 and a half percent is. An eighth.
Anyway, that, that, it makes me less desirous of taking that big of a risk.
I think there might have just been confusion, and I just almost had the exact same thing. So the 8,300 is the total housing built, it's not the affordable units. One eighth of that is about 1,000.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
12 and a half percent is an eighth. Right. I think you're asking a different question than what Jeff answered.
I got confused, too.
My question is, of the affordable housing goal, what percentage is Inclusionary Zoning?
She's asking, you're going to build affordable housing using all these different tools. You're going to create affordable housing using a variety of tools. What percentage of all the affordable housing will be, will be provided by Inclusionary
I think there's two components that can help add some context. The first is that even with all the tools together, it is extremely unlikely that all of the households at 50% AMI or below will have the affordable housing provided to them that they need. That would just require an enormous amount of subsidy from the state, the federal government. It would, it would be unprecedented. Our goal as a city is to do the best that we can and prioritizing in the most equitable fashion we can in alignment with the policies that's set before us. But I can do some back-of-the-envelope math and acknowledging that different areas of the But I can do some back-of-the-envelope math, and acknowledging that different areas of the city will have different set-asides and different AMI levels. We have to meet at least 20,000 housing units by 2044. If we assume a 12% or a 12.5% set-aside across, that creates 2,500 affordable units, which would be about one-sixth of the affordable housing need at 50% AMI or below. But that's just the inclusionary zoning, so that gets us a sixth of the way there. If we continue to find opportunities like the Bellwether, Together Center, which may or may not happen, but we've been successful recently, you know, that, that's getting us around 4,000 affordable housing units, 5,000 affordable housing units. And that's getting us a third of the way there. That was a lot of numbers, did that help?
I, I'm ready to move on, and I just wanted to put that out there for thought, that, that I have to see the, the risk-reward ratio. But I still, I continue to believe that this is risky. And that the, if, if the number is actually relatively small, I would say, okay, why, why are we taking this risk and not pushing out on the other areas that you've discussed? Right, you, there are, if we have other tools, how do we explore other options? Subsidies, you know, or, you know, vouchers and such?
In thinking about the numbers that everyone has bantered about, I think the simplest way to describe it is, about half of the affordable units that will be produced will likely come from inclusionary zoning, incented by MFTE or not, but inclusionary zoning. That's a big number. And if we lose that, there is no way we will make up for it through those other mechanisms. And we're not looking to burden any one thing. Like, the public who is contributing tax dollars to our general fund, or the developers, or the nonprofits, or others, we are pulling every lever we have, because we know the magnitude of the problem. Inclusionary zoning is going to be, is going to be, is going to respond to the market conditions. So it's going to go up and down over time. And some of the other housing things can, some of the other housing options can remain a little bit more stable. But what we also know is without it, we lose a significant piece of the advantage that we get.
I think another point is that not all of the tools attack, are useful at all affordability levels.
Yeah.
I mean, inclusionary zoning is simply not going to work at 30% AMI. It, completely impossible. So, you know, you're going to have to use some of the tools to address the 30% AMI, because you don't have any, you don't have market-based options for 30% AMI. So you're going to have to use vouchers, you're going to have to use V and L, you're going to have to do those kinds of programs for the 30% AMI, and for permanent supportive housing. So for the 50% AMI, you're sort of pushing, that's sort of about the limit of where a market-based solution is going to work. And so that's where you're going to have to apply the inclusionary zoning salute tool.
So, I've talked a lot about this, so I'm going to just try to say, like boil things down to where I'm at now. What I am seeing is that, like, if you view this as an investment, like, the conditions on the ground are just, they're a lot, it's a very large problem to tackle. And I think choosing to go in and say, "Over time, we are going to do something that is going to accumulate and solve the problem." It might be generational, it might be not my children who are benefiting from it, for example. But it's, it's taking a very large problem, and it's breaking it down. We understand the math, we have lots of models, we understand where, like, the risks are right now. We understand where we are in the market cycle, which is not a great spot, like emotionally, to be making a decision like this. But it's, it's taking a very large problem and breaking it down into a series of steps that over time is going to add up to a huge impact. And I, to me, that would feel a lot riskier if it wasn't so clear that the community values are on the side of ensuring that Redmond is a place for people to live who don't just make a bazillion dollars and can afford luxury units. So I, I really agree with that sense of risk and that sense of responsibility. And I also really can, I've thought a lot about it. I feel an immense degree of confidence in saying that this is a reasonable path to take for Overlake. And I appreciate so much that it's, like, it feels weighty, because I think it is. We're talking about predicting future based on what we know today, and that's not, like, that's not something to be taken lightly. But it just, when we move forward to what do we actually want the city to look like in 20 years or in 30 years, like, you have to start at a small place with, like, a confident path that we, if we follow it, we can build up to something that we think will reach the goal. And I think this is reasonably close.
Commissioner Parna, you had your hand up at one point, did you have something you wanted to say?
Actually Chair, I, I think I'll defer it for now, in the interest of time. I want to model a little more. Thank you.
Yes, there's no question it's a risk. The status quo is a risk as well. Where are we, Commissioner? Are we ready to make a recommendation? Do we need more? Do we want to noodle on it more? Do we want to make some changes?
I'm personally confident going forward with the recommended proposal, and not including changes to the Pioneer Program, or, it was one other. The parking is a little bit, I don't really, that's new to me, I don't have enough... To me, there isn't, to me, there isn't necessarily a reason to consider that at this point. If there was strong opinion about that, I would be definitely willing to talk about it further. I'm willing to go with the proposed recommendation, but I, that's just my stance.
Commissioner Parna?
I think I would like to discuss the Pioneer Provision a bit more, just because I, I personally really like the 12.5% at 50%. Both the proposals, I'm fine with, I'm just looking at the Pioneer Provision, and seeing if we want to discuss that as a group. If, if everybody's fine with the Pioneer Proposal, I'm fine with it too. But otherwise, I don't mind discussing that.
Okay, it sounds like we're not quite ready. I, we've already spent quite a bit of time on this tonight. I propose we come back for another study session next time. Commissioner Van Nijm.
I just wanted to get one more question on the record so that you could review it. So, we received a pro forma with some very specific changes to the underlying assumptions. And we received some letters that directed some specific, so you had said that you thought they were all in agreement, and this letter from the Multifamily Housing Authority said, I believe that's who it was, there were several that came in. And it included a pro forma with some very specific changes about the underlying assumptions. So I would like to have some discussion around, and it doesn't have to be tonight, I understand we're moving on. I just wanted this on the record, that I would like to have that addressed, that, those specific concerns.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for welcoming me to the table, indulging me.
Now, we will move on to Redmond 2050, Overlake Zoning Code, Part IV, Transitions to New Regulations Public Hearing and Study Session. And I believe Jeff is serving as Becky.
Hi, I will be, you're stuck with me this evening. Becky unfortunately couldn't be with us. So yes, we're having Part IV of the Overlake Public Hearing tonight. And it's really, there's no slides, it's two, two very discrete topics. One is, as has been discussed already this evening, creating a path for people who have projects that are already underway to continue under the zoning regulations as they exist today, even after new regulations are adopted. So that is one piece of this. And then the second piece creates some flexibility in how development moves forward after new regulations are adopted. And it does so by, by, in effect, amending thresholds in the non-conforming, non-conforming use and structure section of the code, so that there can be, for example, additions to buildings rather than demoing buildings, placing buildings on sites where there's already an existing building on site, just a little bit more creative phasing opportunities, I think, so that development can happen more incrementally as we start, as we start the, as we start using the new regulations. That particular provision would expire in 2029. So it's kind of five years of this ability to be a little more incremental. So those are, that's the nature of the two sections, and that is the conclusion of my introduction.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing.
First, we have Katie Kay.
Welcome back.
Long time, guys. Katie Kendall, for the record. I just wanted to talk about the section on the transition to the new standards. First of all, we welcome the fact that there is one. We've been asking for it for, I don't know, a year at this point, so it's nice to see something in print. But I have some concerns with the mechanics of the provision, in part because of how I know the city works, and in part because it just seems overly complicated for what we're trying to achieve here on the transition to standard. So, the, the first thing you have to do is, they define what is under review for a project, and that means you have to have a complete application and at least one DRB meeting. That sounds good in theory, but it's sometimes not possible in practice. And that's in part because of Redmond's DRB. Carol talked about changes to the DRB, that's not going to happen for another year, and everything that's going to be happening in terms of these pioneer, or, sorry, these transitional projects, is happening this year. There have been several projects I've been working on that have had multiple DRB meetings canceled the last minute, because of lack of a quorum. There are no meetings in January because of a lack of a quorum, although we were trying to schedule them. That may improve, but I don't know. And to rely upon a process where we can't maintain a quorum with projects that are going to try to go through there, I would recommend that you either strike that provision, or, you know, say it, you know, ready for a DRB meeting, or something, I don't know. I would recommend just striking it, because the more criteria we add, the harder this is just going to be. The second is more of a clarifying question as to what a complete application means and what application you're talking about. Is this only for projects that are going through SPE, which is the entitlement for a single building? Or is this also master planning applications with a development agreement or without? Most projects, not most, I'd say half of the projects I'm working on in Overlake are required to have a master plan, often multi-phased buildings. So if we're requiring every single one of those buildings to have a complete SPE application, that is unwieldy. And these master plans, this is not just something to get your foot in the door. They take years of planning, millions of dollars are spent in soft costs going through. I have a project that I've been working on for almost five years. The zoning code has changed three times since that time. And we are almost ready to get our DA, its staff has agreed to it, so we're happy that it's moving forward. But it took that long. And they have a, the third building is a future building, that, because we have 15 years to build. So to require, I just want clarity on what complete application means. I'm hopeful that it means a complete master plan or SPE application, so that these projects that have been planning for years and years don't have to start over again. And then, let's see, third, there's, there's a requirement that applicant meets all application and decision timeframes. This, I think, just needs clarification, there's the code citation for it. But part of that requirement is that the city has to issue a decision within 120 days. And that's just the city time that they review? I don't know when the last time that's been met. It can be exceeded, projects take 12 to 18 to 24 months, or several years, depending on how our things are going. So I just don't want to add additional complication, or maybe there's some clarity as to the expectations that applicants are responding within 90 days, or something, so we can just be a little clearer on what you're looking for there. Because, I mean, I appreciate you don't want someone to just submit an application and sit on it, but we also need to be realistic about what we're talking about here. And the last is the requirement that you must submit a complete building permit application for this project for the end of, by the end of 2025, or everything you've done is wiped out, and you have to start over again with the new code. That feels extreme to me, I know that you're trying to ensure it's the projects that are moving along, but lots of things delay construction, bad economies, for instance. But that should not remove the understanding that we have been working on these projects for years under certain assumptions, and when the assumptions get, you know, ripped out from under your feet, it's, either the project is done completely, or it's, you know, it's just not going to work. So I recommend removing that requirement, and it really causes complications for those master planning projects as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff, did you get all that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, because we'll want that on the issues matrix. Ian, anybody else?
I was just saying, all three points on the issues matrix, yeah.
So with that, I will close the public hearing for verbal comment, and leave it open for written comment. And I've already asked that Katie's comments be on the issues matrix. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, issues that they would like to put on an issues matrix? Not seeing any, Jeff.
Great, and I actually think all the points that Ms. Kendall raised, I think are things that we can work through. I think she identified very clearly kind of the balancing act, right? We do want to be supportive of projects that are moving through the process and are making, you know, timely progress. And we, we don't want people to submit applications and sit on them for years. And so we're trying to strike a balance there, and I think, you know, I think we can get there. And we'll get on the issues matrix for your, for some discussion next time.
What can I say? DRB is volunteers, just like us. Okay, well then, we've got our issues matrix, we don't have anything else to add to it, so.
Yep, and next time, these will be the only open issues. And so it is our, our hope, I think, if we can resolve these issues, that the planning commission would be in a position to make a recommendation on the Overlake package, all four parts of it, at the next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Okay, next is Redmond 2050 Climate Resilience and Sustainability Element Draft II Study Session. Glenn, you finally got, finally get to come join us. Yeah. Throw something at you. Sure.
All right, good evening commissioners, and Happy New Year. I'm Glenn Coyle, on the Long Range Planning Team, Senior Planner. And also joined here tonight with Jenny Leibek, our Environmental Sustainability Program Manager, and will be reviewing the second draft of the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Element. This slide, which you have seen many, many times throughout the Redmond 20 process, is just a reminder of how this element fits into the big- is just a reminder of how this element fits into the bigger picture. The comp plan and its policies provide that big picture, long-term vision and direction for the city. It is intended to be flexible and gets updated through periodic reviews, such as the Redmond 2050 process, as well as during the annual docket amendment process or when other functional plans are updated to ensure consistency. It is the functional plans where the shorter term actions are defined and set the path to implementation. And implementation itself is through the day-to-day cities' capital development projects and programs, as well as through our regulations and the municipal and zoning codes. This slide just kind of summarizes the current city efforts around climate resiliency and greenhouse gas reduction efforts, which is a lot. We've been actually the forefront of doing this for over 10 years. Actually, our Redmond 30, our current comp plan, kind of set the stage for that. And you can see, we actually identified over 300 policies related to sustainability. But the main item is our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. So just double check here. This really, as you've seen this before, this really summarizes what our intent is on doing a climate resilience element. Really, it's to prioritize and support our existing strategies, maintaining and enhance some of the policies that we have in our comp plan. And ultimately, support, provide that high-level policy support to our Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, our Community Strategic Plan, Climate Emergency Declaration, and our City of Redmond Operations Zero Carbon Strategy. And additionally, we're developing this element to make progress towards fulfilling requirements, new requirements of the Code of Washington, the Growth Management Act, kind of preemptively or proactively. Because as the way the law was passed, we technically don't have to do this until 2029. But just, you know, it's been identified as a high city priority. So we wanted to move forward on that. So that's just some context reminder on that. This slide just kind of shows the outline that we had developed for this element to meet the GMA requirements. And also provides kind of a clear policy path to our strategic plan and documents, especially the ESAP. So that there's kind of, like, you know, they kind of match up, I think is the easier way to say that. So that there's that continuity between the comp plan and the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. So with that, in terms of feedback overall from the first draft, I would say that our, the response has been very positive on this and that the community is excited that the city is moving forward on this ahead of state requirements to do so by 2029. We received a lot of great comments and suggestions from the PC. But we also want to give a shout out to the folks from the Community Advisory Committee and Environmental Sustainability Action Committee. They've really had a lot of great suggestions, ideas, just feedback on that. And that's summarized on this slide here. We also, also want to note that we went before council with this. Just usually PC goes first, but we, we had to get on the council calendar last night. And we'll just note that they were also very supportive and excited on this document and on draft two. And Councilmember Critzer commented on how much she loved the vision statement. So, so for the second draft, really, we updated the second draft to include a vision statement and narrative, typical for our comprehensive plan elements. We updated many of the proposed policies based on the community feedback. And we also added five additional policies, just to kind of clarify, make sure, like, things that were missing, et cetera, et cetera. So as we review this and begin finalizing, kind of getting the runway towards PC recommendation, we ask that you keep these questions, as you see on the screen, in mind. Does the narrative support provide context for the policies? And does the vision statement support the city's long-term goals? Does this provide support for existing climate-related goal strategies and actions? Are there anything missing, topics, priorities, et cetera? Are we aligning with our 2050 Redmond themes? And lastly, is this fulfilling the requirements, the GMA requirements for a climate resilience element? So that actually concludes my presentation. But I would also like to note that we have an issues matrix from the first draft. And it didn't make it into the packet. I apologize for that. But we should note that all the comments that were from that, we, we addressed in the second draft. But we're going to suggest that we actually come back, like, next meeting or two, when we can fit in the schedule for, like, just so we can review the issues matrix and close that in a formal sense. But I just want to note that we didn't ignore it. And we, all those comments, we had noted and had addressed for this draft. And that will be noted in the issues matrix when, when you get it before you. So that, that's all I have on this. So, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any comments, questions? Commissioner Parna.
Thank you, Chair. I believe that this draft is really good and some really good changes. And I'm, I'm really heartened to see that it's shaping up beautifully. I just had a couple of comments on clarity of language on, on what carbon neutrality means and methods to get there. I believe I have sent official comments to staff to be added to the issue matrix. So that can be added.
Yes, we received those, just to confirm.
Yes, so I just wanted to put it for the record for the public who's viewing that it will be in the new matrix and we can talk about it then. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Weston.
I might have missed it, but does this draft need to include any sort of language about how often the plan will be updated? Or is that on a separate process?
That's part of the whole comprehensive plan. There's a whole elements that you might have saw that our colleague, Odra Kadinas, provided. It's called the participation implementation, something like that. But that actually prescribes how comprehensive plans are updated. This is, Redmond 2050 is actually part of the comprehensive plan. We call it the periodic review, which before was every eight years. Now it's every 10 years. But that doesn't mean we only update these sections every 10 years. Generally, probably haven't gone through it yet, but we have what's called an annual docket amendment process, which is where we update yearly different parts of the comprehensive plan. Either the, the staff identified issue, sometimes the public proposes. Other times, like, for example, we're going to be updating the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan in 2025. That will come through PC. And at that time, even though this will be, most likely will have been adopted, hopefully, we also will be coming back almost immediately, looking to do some updates to, to be consistent with any changes to, say, state law, King County regulations, PSRC, kind of regional, kind of goals, visions, and of course, our updated ESAP. So it's kind of a continual process. This isn't like one and done. We're not going to look at this till 2035.
That's super helpful because I just, when I look at the environmental sustainability action.
It's a mouth though.
It really is, ESAP. I can see why you like shortened it.
ESAP, yeah.
But when I look at that, it's just, that was such a community process and it's so valuable and it set us half a decade ahead of where we need to be. And it just, I'm really glad to hear that that's going to continue to evolve. Because it just, I'm so appreciative that Redmond has that because I don't think this plan would be anywhere near as strong without it. So 2025 sounds great.
Yeah, we just want to reiterate that this intention is really just to lay the groundwork for developing a climate element. We want to be proactive. But the most important thing is the city already is doing work on this. We kind of have those strategic implementation-type documents. This is really intended to provide that high-level policy structure that actually allows for the implementation stuff. So we kind of, as they say, put the car before the horse or whatever that metaphor is. So we're really just kind of making sure. And that's why we're not trying to be, like, really trying to try new things at this, in this particular iteration. It was not to say we're not trying to be forward-thinking or anything like that. Just, which, there are actually our policies that we're kind of moving forward to that, you know, what we know, like, for the ESAP and stuff. But, yeah, so.
This was, this was a new chapter for comp plans.
This is a brand new, that's, yeah, the first.
Yeah, and one other thing I just want to note is that the state is actually, our Department of Commerce is just starting the rulemaking process for 1181. So like, really forming, you know, what should an element look like and that kind of thing. So as Glenn says, we are certainly ahead of the curve with that. And we'll have an opportunity to kind of refresh during the periodic update as well. So, but we wanted to make sure we had something in this version, or this, the Redmond 2050, kind of this version.
Anything else for this topic? Okay, I think we wore ourselves out on housing regulations. Yeah.
All right, thank you. And as a note, if you have any, you know, specific stuff, just please email to us and we'll add into issues matrix. And we'll review that next meeting or two. So, thank you.
Great. Now we'll move on to Redmond 2050 Transportation Element and Related Regulations final draft. Very exciting. I want to remind everybody, this means that whether or not you've seen it three times, this is like the third time that the planning commission has touched it. So.
Good evening again. Yep, Jeff Churchill, and I'm joined by Josh Mueller. I also want to introduce Josh to the planning commission. This is Josh's first meeting with the planning commission. Josh started with the city in January of 2019. He was reminding me, and so it's already been five years, which is mind-blowing. It's gone by very quickly. Josh is a senior transportation strategist in the Transportation Planning and Engineering Group and also lived in Redmond for a number of years. So yes, as the Chair Nichols said, this is the third and final draft of the transportation element. And so we're going to walk through for you today an overview of the element, some technical appendices to the element, and also transportation-related zoning code amendments. You have seen everything more than one time, except for the appendices. A lot of those were finished after the transportation demand modeling work was done by our consultant in conjunction with the EIS. So we're not able to finish those appendices until the modeling work was finished with the EIS. So now that that has been done, the appendices are also done. So agenda for tonight, talk a little bit about the timeline, what the requirements are for transportation elements, Redmond 2050 themes, key policy updates, and some of the regulatory updates. And this is all in preparation for a hearing that's scheduled for January 31st on this topic. All right, so we are nearing the end of the review of the transportation element. But this actually goes back to fall of 2020. One of the first things that we did was solicit, I just, any idea that people had for transportation projects that would make their life better in Redmond from a mobility standpoint. That was back in the fall of 2020 into the winter of 2021. And since then, we've progressed through kind of what is it that we think we should be updated in the transportation element? What's important to people to have on the table? To what are some of the policy options and alternatives back in 2021? We brought a first draft in the winter and spring of 2022 and a second draft in the summer of 2022. And then that's, we kind of put the text kind of on the shelf for a little while while that transportation, the travel demand modeling was happening in 2022 and 2023. We brought you the first draft of the regulations also in 2022. And so now here we are with the revised drafts for your consideration and for a hearing later this month. But this is a reminder, we've shared this before, kind of what's required in a transportation element. I won't read everything on here. But just as a reminder, that our transportation element must be consistent with the Growth Management Act. It must be consistent with Vision 2050, which are the regional planning policies that are put together by Puget Sound Regional Council. And it must also be consistent with the King County, county-wide planning policies. Last year, as part of, actually as part of House Bill 1181, which created the requirement for a climate resilience and sustainability element, there were also amendments made to other parts of the Growth Management Act, including and especially the transportation element. And so we are endeavoring to meet as many of those new requirements as possible, even though they are not officially required to be met until 2029. But the, the, the main thrust of the requirements is really shifting the whole transportation framework in GMA toward it to a multimodal framework. The, the transportation vision is based, there's a lot of overlap with the Redmond 2050 themes. That's on purpose. So equity and inclusion, sustainability, resilience are the Redmond 2050 themes. Safety and technology are also guiding principles for the update to the transportation master plan, which is underway. And then there are, as you see in the element, some key topics that kind of help organize the element. First is organize around light rail. That's an iteration of a strategy in the existing transportation master plan, which is to prepare for light rail. So instead of preparing, we're now kind of organizing the system around that. Maintaining transportation infrastructure is a big point of emphasis in the transportation element. As Redmond grows, there's more to maintain. And, and keeping that system in a state of good repair is important. And we've heard that is important from the community. Improving travel choices and mobility, that's a direct carryover from the existing plan. So that's still important to the community. And then enhancing freight and service mobility, that's a slight evolution of an existing strategy, which is just enhance freight mobility. But we know that it's not just freight, it's mobile, it's also services. So boiling down a whole lot of public input into kind of some themes that we heard in, in putting together the transportation element, prioritizing access to our centers was a theme from everywhere else in Redmond. Building right-sized, cost-effective facilities for people of all ages and abilities. Providing multimodal access between neighborhoods. So it's not just access to centers. It's also access from areas that are not in the centers to other areas that are also not in the centers. Person last mile solutions to access transit principally. And then, as I said, maintaining the system that we have. And also recognizing that there are going to be new connections needed for growth. And when Josh talks about the transportation facilities plan, that, that's really the focus, is kind of where are those new connections? So as a result, kind of the big updates in the transportation element, and these are not all new since the last time you saw it, but these are new compared to kind of the existing element in the comp plan today. And so you've already mostly seen this. But an emphasis on maintenance, as I said, a new section on equity and mobility. And it's, and it's really focused around independent mobility for everybody. Incorporating the greenhouse gas reduction targets from the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. Safety can comfort and convenience of vulnerable users. That's a little bit of jargon, but what, what we mean principally is those walking and rolling on bikes or on foot or other mobility device. Planning for fleet electrification, that's a requirement from PSRC to make sure that that's part of our plan. And then connecting neighborhoods to one another. As I said, one of the big pieces of input was really connecting neighborhoods. That's, that is a, a key policy update as well. So for that is kind of the policy backdrop. I'm going to turn it over to Josh to describe one of the eight appendices, which is the, which is probably the most important one and the most scrutinized one, the transportation facilities plan.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, and thanks, Jeff, for the introduction. Again, I'm Josh Mueller in the Transportation Planning and Engineering Group within planning and community development. I'm here to introduce Appendix G of the transportation element. And that is the transportation facilities plan. I'll refer to it as the TFP, not to be confused with the TMP, which is the transportation master plan, which is the transportation element of the comp plan that will be updated following the adoption of Redmond 2050. Redmond's TFP is a plan-based concurrency system that meets Washington State's Growth Management Act, requiring that cities have a financially constrained, long-range infrastructure plan for transportation. Redmond's TFP projects are what the city anticipates being fully funded by 2050 and that the networks funded are adequate to accommodate the growth that Redmond 2050 anticipates. Further, transportation concurrency aligns with
Further, transportation concurrency aligns with the TFP. In simplest terms, um concurrency is the measurement for the city uh that the TFP projects are delivering at a pace that's proportionate with growth. Uh, next slide, Jeff. Appendix G of the TFP um for Redmond 2050 uh will follow through uh adoption at the end of 2024 and then later updated into um uh later adoption of the Transportation Master Plan um following. Um, the graphic on the right here kind of shows how the Transportation Master Plan um is packaged with the comprehensive plan. And what we're speaking of here tonight is just that small, oh, back, Jeff, sorry. Yeah, that small little triangle there, the TFP. Um, those are the projects that are part of um a larger project list that I'll go through with the transportation master plan, and those are called the buildout projects. Um, some will say the unfunded buildout. Uh, the TFP or TFP projects and um TMP projects uh get implemented within two ways uh at the city of Redmond. Um, one through the capital investment strategy, the CIS, and the capital improvement program and the biannual budget, and then also by developers and other agencies. Next slide. Revenue sources and assumptions for the TFP come primary primarily from the following sources. Um, they come from city taxes and fees, general funds, uh, impact fees, um, and now we have a newly formed transportation benefit district. Uh, fund, they can come from funds from other agencies such as uh sound transits, investment in light rail, um, projects done by WASDOT, King County, or partnering with our neighboring jurisdictions. Um, funds can also also come from developers. Um, they're paid uh through impact fees or uh mitigation uh for transportation impacts. Um, and then also uh other miscellaneous funding sources. Uh, next slide, Jeff. All right, uh, revenue, or let's see, Redmond's current TFP was originally adopted in 2013 and had a small update in 2017 uh to include projects that developers had committed to construct uh through development agreements. Um, projects that are on the buildout list are not eligible for impact fee credits by developers unless it's on the TFP. So it's a way of, the impact fee credits are gained through the TFP and it's a way for them to, developers not get kind of double taxed for building Redmond's system. So if they're on the buildout plan for them to get impact fee credits, they need to be on the TFP to get those uh those credits. So um, that's an important thing to note and why we're updating now with um Redmond 2050 is there are several projects on the buildout list now that need to be moved to the TFP that developers are waiting through development agreements to construct uh facilities. Um, and also, Redmond's current TFP is nearing completion as its horizon year was 2030. Um, the strategies, as Jeff mentioned, in 2013 were to prepare for light rail. And with light rail uh almost upon us, uh, the strategy now is to organize and connect to light rail um and this major investment in in our uh community. Another big change to the TFP, um, earlier this year and effective as of July 1st, the city of Redmond helped sponsor Washington State, Washington State Senate Bill 5452 that offer, authorizes impact fee revenue to fund improvements to bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Uh, this is a major benefit for Redmond and all our local jurisdictions across the state. Uh, previously, only system improvement projects for vehicle modes of transportation were eligible for the TFP. And funding investments collected from impact fees were to only construct those type of projects. Now, system improvements for active modes of transportation can be included on the TFP project list and subsequently eligible for impact fee credits by developers to construct. The system now will include sidewalks and bicycle facility, facilities to be constructed by collected impact fees. Uh, Redmond's TFP is a plan-based concurrency system that meets GMA requirements and is closely tied to these transportation impact fees. Redmond City Council is the approval authority for impact fees and will be presented at future Redmond 2050 and transportation element meetings, the TFP, transportation impact fees, and concurrency for future direction by staff. Uh, thank you, and I'll pass it on to Jeff Churchill for additional topics.
All right, thanks, Josh. Um, so I'm going to go through some slides that we last went through in 2022, and it's just a a high level overview of what the proposed zoning code amendments are. Um, so it it might feel repetitive because we, you have seen it before. But I'll try to do it quickly. Um, so we propose to repeal uh Redmond Zoning Code, Chapter 21 dot 28. Um, this is a, I'm sorry, I'm not actually pressing forward, it just keeps moving. Um, this is a chapter that um sets building setbacks from high capacity transit corridors in anticipation of light rail, right, light rail being constructed. So it's under construction, property rights have been acquired, this is no longer needed, and we can repeal it. Um, off-street parking minimums, we propose to reduce or repeal off-street parking requirements um in centers near transit and to support complete neighborhoods. Another thing, and this is an evolution really since the last time, is that uh we have consolidated the parking ratio requirements into a single table in the parking chapter rather than having it in every zone chapter. And one thing that was revealed, I would say, through the process of consolidating those tables, was just how disparate the parking standards were from zone to zone um and from use to use. And so that has been streamlined a great deal in the proposal. There are also some other parking related amendments proposed. One is to authorize on-street paid parking. So not actually create paid parking, but it would authorize the city council to create it in the future. Uh, to regulate the distribution of compact stalls so that there are not, they are not disproportionately um in abundance in the mixed use portion of shared parking facilities on the theory that, you know, um, people who live in those buildings probably are going to be able to navigate the smaller stalls more easily because they are familiar with the building and so that they they don't need to disproportionately be in the residential section either, but just not having them disproportionately in areas where there are a lot of visitors. Um, they, we have a provision for in-lu parking fees that, to the best of my research, has never been used, so repealing that. And then uh making sure that there's parity between requirements for um off-site, long-term bicycle parking and off-site vehicle parking, neither of which are very common, but just having some parity in the distance requirement. Um, there are several changes related to ped, bike, and transit facilities. One is just updating references, making sure that they're complete. Making the requirements for temporary uh sidewalk closures apply both the pedestrian and bicycle facilities and to address safety continuity and convenience, uh, which is a a higher, a higher standard that is currently used uh now. Uh, making sure we have five feet of unobstructed sidewalk width always, uh, where the sidewalk is at least five feet if it's built. And then making sure that we're getting transit stops and shelters where transit is actually planned in the future. Today's standard is a little bit muddled, um, and just tying it straight back to the transit plan in transportation master plan is a much clearer thing to do in staff's opinion. There are some changes related to what are today called transportation management plans or management programs. It's confusing because it's a TMP also. So the first thing we're proposing to do is change the name of it to Mobility Management Program, so it's a different acronym. Uh, and then among the changes are increasing the value of the transit pass to a hundred percent of the transit pass or equivalent, um, specifically identifying caching, parking cache out as an option. Uh, also requiring management of parking if it becomes, if it's needed um to uh address parking usage in a facility. Uh, there is one figure that we propose to move into the Transportation Master Plan out of the zoning code, it's not needed in the code. And there are some code references to Mayor Village that need to be updated, they are missing. Um, and then there is a proposal to streamline the the permit process for cafe seating, um, such that is if it is only in the right-of-way, and typically that means, uh, you know, on a, on a sidewalk where there's room, uh, or maybe in a curbing, um, that's devoted to parking otherwise, that a temporary use permit would not be required because it's entirely within the right-of-way. And instead, there could be a, uh, there won't be a, it it'll be like a right-of-way use permit, but specifically for cafe seating. There's a lot of other kinds of right-of-way use permits that get issued. I don't know how that is happening, but just to have it be for cafe seating, so streamline that um the permitting. So today, we wanted to summarize the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan and Redmond Zoning Code. Um, we have a study session scheduled to continue this conversation on the 24th and a public hearing is scheduled for the 31st. Um, I put the issues matrix in the packet today uh with updates since last time. Um, since it's 9:30 and we have time next, at our next meeting, my proposal is that we would um um take questions and conversation to put, to get new issues out, to put onto the matrix, and then spend the 24th, all the time we have on the 24th, just going through the issues, both old that are already there and anything new that you might identify this evening. And in closing, um, I want to make sure it's well understood, because I heard Josh talk about it a little bit, that we are updating, we are proposing to update the transportation element, some related portions of the zoning code. And we're also proposing to basically pull out specific sections of the Transportation Master Plan and make them, for now, appendices to the transportation element. These are the parts of the Transportation Master Plan that are required by the Growth Management Act that we have to update by the end of 2024. We are also updating the Transportation Master Plan. That will be finished not in 2024. But when it is finished, we will take those appendices and basically pull them back into the updated um TMP. So it's kind of an interim home, but they need a home because they have to be updated in 2024. So that's kind of what's going on um with the appendices. And with that, I'll, uh, that concludes the presentation. We'd be happy to answer questions and um note issues to add to the matrix for next time.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, concerns to add to the issues matrix for next time? We have nothing new.
All right, well, very good. So we will go through the issues that you had identified earlier at our next meeting in preparation for the public hearing, and thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Nice to meet you. Okay. Staff and Commissioner updates. Ian.
As previously discussed, our amazing community advisory committee uh has nearly wrapped up all of their work. The last meeting will be this Thursday, uh, the 11th at City Hall. The meeting itself starts at about 6:00 and we expect it to run until about 7:00. And then from 7:00 to 7:30. A celebration.
Party.
Long-range planning is trying to express our gratitude to these amazing volunteers. There's, the group mindfully dedicates themselves to this work. There's been a really low attrition rate over this multi-year project. We're just very grateful for this group. In fact, yesterday, the Chair and the Co-Chair went in front of City Council to discuss much of the community uh engagement, the ways that uh the feedback has been integrated into the work. It's, it was just outstanding. Um, I'd recommend taking a look at the uh video on demand if you have the time. Uh, and also at that last meeting, Glenn shared a bunch of Phase Two elements. It was the Glenn Coyle Show. We did capital facilities, utilities, natural environment, and that new climate uh resiliency and sustainability element. Uh, Council was supportive. Uh, and then moving forward, I would just like to uh remind Commission to get your rest where you can because we have a packed agenda coming up in the immediate future. Pretty much every meeting is expected to go to 9:00 PM or later. Um, but that is the summary of staff updates so far.
Thank you. Any Commissioner updates? Rest up. Uh, then I look for a meeting to, a motion to adjourn. That's the word I'm looking for.
Mr. Moon?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.